Oh, you're you're here?
Um, I did just want to add that it's not live streamed, but it's going to be recorded and uploaded tomorrow.
Okay. Very good. Well, it'll be obvious when Janice gets here because we'll be able to steer.
And of course, I told several people to watch it online, so I guess maybe they won't.
Yeah, no, not tonight.
All right. Well, that's the way it goes. All right. Well, I think it is. My clock says it's six o'clock, so. Give me one second. All right. So I will go ahead and call the Planning and Commission Meeting to Order. Today is March 29th, 2023. Welcome, everyone. And why don't we begin by establishing a quorum, please?
Okay. Mr. Wathers?
Here.
Ms. Kirchner will hopefully be here soon. Mr. Lester?
Here.
Mr. Hoff?
Here.
Mr. Kane?
Here.
Mr. Smith?
Here.
Commissioner Gordon? And Secretary Eisenberg?
Here.
Please let the record reflect that five members are present, and we do have a quorum.
Very good. Thank you. Let's stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please. Pledge allegiance to the flag, the states of America, and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We'll move on to item four, which is review and approval of the agenda. We were sent a revised agenda on Monday. Do we have any other revisions?
No, just the revision that was sent on Monday, adding a new item six for community solar in the agricultural zone. We just wanted to bring this to your attention and bring it into the line item for this evening. Those are the only changes for the agenda.
All right. So with that, is there a motion to approve the agenda as presented as of Monday?
I make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
All right, motion second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, that looks unanimous. Thank you. The agenda will stand approved. We'll move on to item five, which is the administrative report. I'll turn it over to Madam Secretary.
All right. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for being here. And again, as we said earlier, and this will be posted tomorrow. We are recording this meeting. The reason is is because there's a conflict with one of the commissioners' town halls this evening. So we can't livestream both at the same time. So those that are participating are participating by signing up from our link on our website and logging in that way. Also, for April 18th's meeting, so this is kind of technically taking the place of our first Wednesday of the month work session. And then our next meeting will be April 18th, which is our daytime meeting. That meeting will be short and it'll only be limited to two items. We're going to try to finish up by 11 if we can. The reason is is that the commissioners have their budget at that time in the afternoon. So we want to make sure that we're wrapped up and done so the commissioners can have their budget deliberations and meetings, which will actually be in 003. So that's the reason why we've added more items than usual to this evening's agenda. And the same will be true for the May, the May meeting as well, that first May, and I'm going to get you the date exactly. For the the May 3rd evening meeting, that will be a longer, similar to this type of meeting length and time. And we'll actually have two development review projects on that meeting since we weren't able to put them on the April 18. So just wanted to give you an idea of what's coming up in the next several meetings. And also, unfortunately, as many of you know, Mr. Klosick had to step down from his role in the planning commission. So we are looking for members. So again, if you know anyone who you think would be a great fit for this planning commission, please get the word out. We, I think, will be doing a press release and the commissioners will let folks know as well to apply. So that's all I have for this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Then we'll move on to item six, which is the Community Solar in Agricultural Zone Moratorium Overview.
So this evening, we have from us, from Land and Resource Management, Brenda Denny. She was the main staff person in charge of the Community Solar text amendment that happened several years ago. I believe the only person on this commission at that time when this was put into place was Mr. Wathers. So you may have some recollection of the extensive process that Brenda and her team went through to flesh out the community's solar aspect in the agricultural zone. That was in response to the state's pilot study that they had launched at that time, which actually I believe now, correct me if I'm wrong, Brenda, went from pilot to fully, fully fledged, like the pilot ended in the state's going with the community solar allowance for the state.
What will happen if the legislation passes the general trend this term?
Oh, good. Okay. Yeah, I knew that that was something happening. So that's happening. And then I'm not sure how many of you have been paying attention, and Brenda will go over all of this. Some of the community solar projects that now have made their way through our system to some extent because of that pilot program in the state of Maryland. We're going through the development review process, and that drew up some concerns from the surrounding communities. So in response to that, to kind of reevaluate what our code says, the Board of County Commissioners decided to have a six-month more moratorium to specifically figure out if there's anything else that we need to do as a county for the code for the community solar in the ag zone specifically. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Brenda to update you where we are in the process. We are not to you yet, but we wanted to give you the heads up that this will be something you'll be seeing in the upcoming months. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Brenda. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, I'm gone. Linda told you everything, so see you later. Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Can I share my screen, Laura? For the PowerPoint? Thank you. Can everybody see that?
Yes, I can see it. Thank you.
Yes, I can too. Thank you.
Trying to move it on my screen here.
Now it's just a beautiful castle.
Ah, I guess.
Yeah, very good. Now it's on our screen.
But I think that castle could use a little solar. I'm just saying.
That's where we're going to meet next time? Okay, so I'm not here to give you an extensive presentation or anything. I really just wanted, as Linda said, give you kind of a heads up that this is happening because you'll be part of the process and it will be coming to you to review and recommend what, you know, what's being proposed or provide a recommendation on what's being proposed. So I'm just giving you a heads up. As Linda mentioned, you know, this moratorium was adopted recently, and if Mr. Wathers was the only one that was on the planning commission at the time, then, you know, it could help to just have a little heads up and maybe get familiar with what is currently in place that will be, you know, subject to revision.
Excuse me, Brenda, can you do this in full screen mode or presentation modes? We can see the full slide. We're still seeing the note side on the sidebar, just to make it easier to see. It still kind of shows it too. And no, now it's showing other. Okay, it just might be the screen situation, but that's fine. Thank you.
It's probably because I have two screens. So this, when the, when we initially started this process two years ago, solar was allowed, commercial solar. So we have accessory solar and we have commercial solar. Accessory solar is, you know, what somebody might have on their house, I mean, a farm, any, any property could have it, but it's intended basically to serve that property only. It's not intended to be a facility that, you know, you are actually selling the energy for. Commercial solar is just the opposite. It's intended for the energy to be, you know, a commercial operation. It's put back into the grid and sold in some manner of fashion. So community solar is different than some types of commercial solar in that it is a subscription-based operation. So it's much smaller than what would typically be considered a utility or large-scale operation. And all of the, the person who operates it or the entity that operates it sells subscriptions to the facility. And the subscriptions are limited in, you know, what you can purchase based on, you know, like your average bill. So you can't subscribe to much more than what you would normally be using. So that's the difference between the like, commercial in general and this subset of commercial called community solar. So all, any type of solar, commercial solar is allowed in our commercial industrial zone. But two years ago, the board asked that we come up with a proposal that would allow community solar facilities on remaining portions in the agricultural zone. And part of the reason for that was, you know, that probably one of the main reasons for that was a push from the state, you know, the state has energy goals that include renewable energy, you know, primarily solar and wind that we have to, that they want to reach very quickly. So there's been a lot of pressure for local jurisdictions to have areas available for solar development. And every year, we've seen stuff come through the legislature, you know, proposing to do this or that. And some of it would be mandating, you know, that certain amounts of solar have to be required. So part of the effort to get ahead of that and show that we're making a good faith effort to actually provide opportunities for some kinds of solar, this, that was the main impetus for this, this effort. So in the fall of 2020, the, we had some concepts that we brought out to some stakeholder groups and got their feedback. And then went back to the commissioners in December with those concepts. They gave us some direction on some changes to make. And then January and February, we went through the process to review those changes with the planning commission. And then the planning commission made a recommendation to the board. The board worked through that and then adopted an amendment to the zoning code in May of 2021. So although this could completely change, just to give you context, I wanted to just quickly review the current requirements that are in the zoning code. And so community solar facilities in Carroll County are limited to two megawatts in size. And two, a megawatt is roughly five acres, you know. And so two megawatts would be roughly 10 acres of power. And then there's associated infrastructure. The state has used to cap it at two megawatts, and now they're capping it at five megawatts. So it's increased since we adopted this. But because we, the commissioners adopted it at two megawatts, it's still capped at two megawatts for Carroll County. There's also a 20-acre maximum size of the area that's used for the solar facility, which includes the panels, as well as all associated infrastructure, which includes access roads, inverters, landscape buffers, everything associated with the facility. There's a requirement, because these are on remaining portions, and those, most of the remaining portions have already taken their residential development rights. That's why the remaining portions, a conservation easement is required for the portion of the property that is not under solar. And part of the reason for that, the main reason really, was there was a lot of concern about these facilities expanding in the future. And the conservation easement was a mechanism to try to address that concern by limiting the ability for these facilities to expand. Of course, a site plan is required. It is a commercial use, and so that plan would be going before the planning commission for review and approval. The requirements also say no productive topsoil should be removed, and there should be no impact to environmental resources. One of the requirements that maybe was a little more progressive than we've seen in a lot of other places, at least we think so, is agricultural co-location. And since that time, the buzzword has now become agrivoltage. So if you hear agrivoltage, that means that there's a solar facility with an agricultural use on the same space. So for our requirements, it had to be, they had either graze, raise some kind of crop, which would probably be, wouldn't be a row crop, but it would, it could be a specialty crop. It could be grazing sheep. And or the other option would be to achieve a solar, pollinator-friendly solar designation from Maryland Department of Natural Resources. Being, and the reason for that being that, you know, the agriculture need be. Then it had a requirement for landscape buffer, which in the regulations, it does say it should provide full screening at time of installation. There's a 40-foot setback requirement, 15-foot height requirement. And the reason it's that high is to allow the grazing underneath. The utility lines have to be undergrounded, and then it requires the decommissioning planned, which also requires a public works agreement and a bond so that if the company is not around when it needs to be removed, we use the bond to do that. So the moratorium was adopted by the board on March 9. And as Linda mentioned, it'll be a six-month moratorium. And during that time, will be the processing, review, permitting, and construction of community solar energy generating systems in the agricultural zone will be halted. So the board gave us direction on the March 23 regarding the applicability. So we're talking about community solar only in the agricultural zone. The issues that we need to address were identified. So Commissioner Bigliotti had presented a series of points with a number of concerns that he put together based on what he had been hearing. And if you're not familiar with those points, you could be linked there. You can go to that PowerPoint and read what his points were. And then as well as some additional staff identified issues that need clarifying. So, you know, having been in place for two years now, there are some things that as we go through the development review process, we realize need some cleaning up or need clarification. So we'll be doing that at the same time. And to do this process, the commissioners asked us to put together a work group. And staff, we're in the process of forming that so they can provide some input on the concerns. And then we can go back to the board with some options to consider for the different issues and concerns. The work group, and then this is from board direction, will consist of two members of the agricultural community that oppose solar in agricultural areas, two adjacent property owners who currently propose community solar facility, and CSEGS, it stands for Community Solar Energy Generating Systems, a representative from the solar industry, and then a property owner who has a proposed facility on their property. And then we have plant staff from those, those three departments. I work in land and resource management, so myself and the director are facilitating the work group. And then we'll also have staff from these three agencies that will be working with us and supporting the effort as well. So the process is, we are on the first blue block there. And like I said, we have six months ago this done, so we're putting the work group together now. The work group will hold several meetings to go through and discuss the main points and issues, talk about applicability, come up with feedback and options, then we'll go back to the commissioners, give them a briefing on where, you know, the discussions that are happening. If we get any further direction, we'll go back to the work group for another meeting to wrap that up. Then back to the commissioners to review what the, you know, the options are and what's been discussed. And then they'll give us direction when they're ready to then go take this to you for review and to look at the code change. And you'll see that's the yellow block here. So we review the draft code changes, and then you'll provide a recommendation to the board. And of course, that, that's requirement under state law that the planning commission has to review any zoning code changes and make a recommendation to the board before the board can make any changes. So your recommendation then goes back to the board, can't commissioners. They'll review and discuss the proposed amendments and decide what's going to go out to public hearings. Public hearing will be held, then they discuss, deliberate, and decide what they're going to adopt. So, I mean, that's all happening between now and sometime in early September. And so if you have any other, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them, but you can also find more information. We've got an easy URL here. It's carrollcountymd.gov/community-solar. So we are going to be posting information and updates on the process, documents, commissioners. PowerPoints that we've given are there, be the place for the public and anybody to go to the update of what's going on with this process. Or feel free to contact me if you have questions about community solar or anything in the process that might help you, you know, understand what's going on leading up to us coming back to you with the proposed code revision. Anybody have questions?
So Brenda, that was very helpful. I do have a couple of questions. The moratorium, does it, it, does it have any effect on the commercial solar, or is it only community solar?
Well, I guess, just for clarification, community solar is commercial solar. It's just one subset of it. But this particular, the moratorium was only applying to community solar and only community solar in the agricultural zone. So it will not affect anything that happens in the commercial and industrial district.
Okay, yeah. My question was a poor question. Thank you.
Hard to understand that.
The, I just think it's important for those that are watching this to understand it doesn't, it's not a moratorium on all solar everywhere in the county under all circumstances. The the work group, I just had a question on, from the agricultural community. I didn't quite understand the box. Was it folks from the ag community, some that support this and some that are opposed to it? I mean, is there a, there's a balance there?
Well, that, what we were directed to do by the commissioners was to have two members from the agricultural community that oppose solar in agricultural zones. And they specifically mentioned the Farm Bureau. So we'll, we'll be asking representatives from Farm Bureau to sit on the work group.
But is there, is there any member from the agriculture community that is going to be on the work group that is in favor of this? It just seems you'd want to have a balance there.
Right, right. No, I understand. I think that what the commissioners thought was that the property owner who has a proposed project represents somebody from the agricultural community who supports solar.
Oh, okay. Um, that's, I had read in the paper, I think, a comment from somebody, and I might not, I read it, I just skipped it. But I thought there was a comment somewhere that said that no one, no farmer in the ag community supported this. And I might have gotten that wrong, but in my recollection is when we were going through this process, we heard from a number of people in the ag community that were farmers, and many were opposed to it. But there were also folks that came forward that were in favor of it. So to the extent anyone thinks that that's, that it's one-sided, my, my recollection is, as we heard from the community, we were very sensitive, wanting to hear from the farming community. And my sense, my recollection is we had both sides of that argument come to us. Matt, you're in the farming community. I see you have your green light on.
Yeah, I would say there's probably more opposed than for it, but there are some on both sides. I'm kind of neutral. I mean, I know that, you know, as a county, we're worried about what might happen if we don't have enough solar and the state mandates something. I think that's what the former commissioners were worried about, and that's why they went in this direction. So I try to tell them that, but it doesn't mean they're not opposed. So I think it would be pretty easy to find two that are opposed.
Yeah, you are right about that. We did, part of the presentation was that if the county wasn't interested in doing this, at some point, the state was likely to mandate it, and the county would have a lot of voice. At least.
I mean, what, what farmers really don't want are 100-acre solar farms. And I think the commissioner's view was this might alleviate that happening at some point, but you still don't know that. Because in a lot of counties, that's the case.
Yeah. Well, the last thing I'll say, I'm sorry, Pete, go ahead.
Right, you know, I was just gonna say, Brenda, did I hear you correct to say that, you know, if you did it wall-to-wall, you could get basically one megawatt out of an acre? Is that what I heard you say?
Basically, I mean, the industry standard is that it roughly takes five acres per megawatt of solar panels.
Okay. So, you know, it's curious to me that we said that you could do a 20-acre, we had a 20-acre max when, you know, 10 to 15 would, would have probably sufficed. You know, assuming that topography and, and everything else worked, worked in that way. Was that why we said we made it 20, was to give a little extra cushion there? Why, why did we say 20 and not something more along the lines of 15 to alleviate these fears of these mega fields of solar panels? Why, why did we say 20? I'm curious.
Right. Well, I mean, whether it was 12 or 20, two megawatts isn't going to take any more space on 12 than it will on 20 than it will on 12. But yeah, basically what you said is accurate, that, you know, you, in some cases, the facility may not be right up against the road, so it'll need an access road, and that needs to be part of that 20 acres. It has to include the landscaping and the inverter, and sometimes, based on play conditions, they may not, there might be a gap between groups of panels. So that's primarily why.
Okay, all right.
And the other thing is if.
Go ahead. I'm sorry.
Okay, the other potential too is if you want to put certain types of specialty crops underneath the panels, sometimes what they'll do is they'll space the panels out more to allow more sun to get through for those crops.
Right, that makes total sense. And then the last thing I'll ask is, can you forward this, this presentation to us, please? I didn't get it in advance of the meeting, and I'd love to kind of flip through it again.
Sure. Laura has, and I'm sure she can forward.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Yes. Brenda sent it. I can forward that to you tonight.
And we'll also post it on that webpage right there. So that'll be another way it can be accessed by you or by anybody else.
Any other questions for Brenda? Well, Brenda, thank you for the, for the presentation. It's very helpful. And I know the commission will look forward to being part of this process as, as this moves forward. So thank you.
Sure. Well, if we stay on track, then I look forward to seeing you in June.
Take care. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
We'll move on to item seven on our agenda, which is Water and Sewer Triennial Update. And we're getting an introduction tonight from Bryce Wagner. Hey, Bryce.
Good morning, or good evening, sorry. And can I share my screen, please, Laura?
Yeah, just give me a minute here.
All right, thanks. So yeah, just before, you know, my screen, I'm able to share what I'm going to do is is that, everybody able to see that? Yep.
Yes, we.
So you've been, for you, for the aspect of amendments to our water sewer master plan. Well, this is the trilateral update, which occurs roughly every three years. And what happens with that is it's state mandated. And it's the, so in essence, sort of, you know, since everybody except for Mr. Wathers is probably, this is new to them for the water sewer aspect of things. What exactly is the water and sewer, you know, what's the master plan? So it's based on Title IX, subtitle five of the Health Environmental Article of the Antecedent Code of Maryland. It requires Carroll County to review and adopt a water and sewer master plan every three years. So the big thing is, the Carroll County, we don't have a central authority overseeing water and or sewer services. So we work with all the different municipalities, eight of them, as well as the Freedom Area, which the county owns. So we work with all the different municipalities, eight of them, as well as the Freedom Area, which the county owns for the water sewer service. We work with them to incorporate them into our water sewer master plan. And the objective has, there's three main parts of the objective. One is to make sure there's ample water supply to be collected for current development as well as future development that could occur. Also that there's wastewater is able to be collected and delivered to the, the points that are suited for that distribution. And then finally, wastewater can be either treated before it's discharged to state waters in compliance with water quality standards. And in some cases, in the city of Westminster has just begun this, they are doing a pilot for a water wastewater reuse program to incorporate and add hopefully a new source of water. So the county government is required to develop these plans. And we're, so the governor body is, we're the coordinated agencies. We work with all the towns and the providers and their staff, whether it's their planning staff in conjunction also with their water, water and sewer facility staff to get this, this plan worked on and put together. And it's not only public systems, it's also there are some private systems within, within the, within the county. So, you know, why do we update the plan? Like I said, it's required by the state. Be updated every three years. And the last update was done and adopted and approved by the state of Maryland in July of 2019. Now, since then, we've done 15 total amendments, or if you want to look at it this way, we have done roughly six, five cycles, that total 15 amendments each. So we spring of 2020, spring of 21, fall of 21, spring of 22 and fall of 22. So pretty much every, twice a year, we're always amending the plan. And that's typically comes from the fact that either a owners come to us and say that they may not want to be a part of the system or they need to get in the system. So we talk with the provider to see if they're, if there's available capacity for that aspect. Or if the provider comes to us and says, at this time, we have a new development coming in. And they were in future, which is seven to 10 years out. Then they look at that and say they're ready to go. Listen, can we bring them into the priority aspect? So we changed the service area maps to incorporate a property into where it needs to go as well as update the, the charts for the, the demand as needed. Now, the water and sewer, the plan in text amendments, these amendments actually supersede the 2019 plan. So if whatever plan, whatever amendment was done, if it was in, let's say, the town of Manchester and it updated the map, if that map now is based off of the newest map there, not the map in 2019, as well as demands and that type of thing. So the process, I distributed and worked with the towns and distributed their chapters for water and sewer as well as the maps for them to look at the uses data to see how much is being, how much is being used as well as infrastructure projects that are in the works that could potentially expand the system, help alleviate when it comes to sewer inflow and infiltration, which is considered, which is called INI or is water areas that have leaks where they're pumping more water than they're billing for. And when you look at the sewer side, you're actually, their flows are higher going to the sewer plant than they are actually being billed for. So that shows you have more water coming from the ground into your system going to the sewer plant. So we look at all that to sort of see what the average daily flows are, what the demands are, if any of their wells, if they're on wells, if they're have the ability to, if they've been increased or they're offline for some reason. So we've worked with them to make changes since the last trilateral update. And look at all the maps, looking at when it comes to the maps, where, where the lines are, if the lines are up to date, if a new system has come in. The good, a good example is Stonegate here in Westminster. In 2017, or actually, I'm sorry, 2019, that was not, a shovel had not hit the ground yet. It was just starting. Now that is close to being built out. So that is now shown more as an existing service area. And we have lines that showed that they are now lines in the ground. Once everybody is comfortable with what has been presented. So I received the information from the towns, from the providers and incorporated in their exact chapters. And we send drafts back and forth to make sure that I understood what they're saying, everything looks good. As same, the same goes with the maps. So once we feel everybody is on the same page and says, yes, this is what we, we are talking about and this is what we, we are hoping for. Then a week I go in front of their, their town, the town councils or not the county, but the planning commissions and ask them to certify their sections, their chapters for consistency with their, the most recent or most current water, the most current comprehensive plan. So what have I done so far? All the staff, the municipal, municipal staff is complete. I've worked with everyone back and forth multiple times to get all the information and make sure everything is concise. And I've also made updates to the non-municipal chapters, so the water resources chapter, working on demographics, the zoning and reference maps. We have maps that show the areas, you know, the different rock, rock formations, different soils, as well as that type of thing. So far, we've presented a three, three planning commissions, the city of Tawney Town, city of Westminster and the town of New Windsor, they have all certified consistency with their most recent comprehensive plan. And in the very first slide, you may see, you may have seen a small little word, that is the, the plan cover that, that was designed for this current section. So what do I have coming up next? The town of Manchester chapter is pretty much complete. And I'm looking to go in front of them on April the 18th, ask their planning commission for consistency with their 2018 comprehensive plan. And I'm currently working with the towns of Hampstead, Union Bridge and Mount Airy to finalize their texts, maps and tables. And looking to go in front of these town of Union Bridge on the 20th, Mount Airy on the 24th and Hampstead on the 26th for their consistency statements and certifications. And at the same time, in the main, I am working with our Bureau of Utilities to finalize just the data for Pleasant Valley Water and Sewer Systems and Barquill Water System. And then finalize the data for the Hampstead Sewer System as well as the Freedom Water and Sewer System infrastructures. And then after all that is, is done and complete, I will come in front of the planning commission again on May the 16th or to request certification of the entire document as well as the chapters for Hampstead and Freedom. Have they certified consistent with our, our plans and ask for a recommendation to for that to the county commission. So that is sort of a brief overview of the water and sewer master plan of what we're, what it's about. And if there's any questions, I'll be more than happy to answer them. Thank you.
Any questions for, for Price? I, I just want to know how you managed to go to so many meetings. It seems like a marathon for you to be attending all of these different meetings.
It can be, but I am fortunate enough to have a, a bunch of great colleagues that they have also they've offered to, to, when it comes to the certifications to learn. And if it's, because some of the meetings do fall on the same night. So I do have to have the ability to hopefully have some help. And I've had, they have said, yes, they are more than happy and if they're able to, to, to do it. So they actually help and they do the certification aspect. I got all the documents and everything for them. So pretty much when they get there, they just have to say, here, we just need the certification and all the questions hopefully been answered beforehand. Something, you know, Monday night I did have New Windsor certification also. At the same time, Tawney Town was looking at doing theirs and a question came up in New Windsor and I texted the planner who was going to be talking with Tawney Town to say, if this happens to occur, I gave her some just what happened and some guidance. And she responded back. She was like, I would have had no clue what to do in that situation. So thank you for, for letting me, you know, giving that to me, but luckily nothing came up out of the ordinary. So it can be a marathon, but it's, I'm sort of trying to get down to a good science.
Well, the reason I made the comment was that your thoroughness, honestly, I think gives us more comfort when you're bringing it back to us, knowing that you've taken this process so seriously, you're attending these things or your colleagues are, you're answering the questions. And it's something that's done comprehensively and thoroughly and seriously. So we very much appreciate that, Price.
Yes, thank you. Yeah, I definitely, I, multiple phone calls, emails back and forth with, with all the municipalities and the providers. And before I even go to their planning commissions, I send everything to them for one last review to make sure everything looks concise to what they're, what they sent. And so, yeah, I want to make sure I get, we get it done correctly the first time and then so when we come to our planning commission, it is not a rubber stamp, but it's a, they have, you have the, the know-how of, yes, it was done concise and thorough. So what is being provided is, is the very good information.
Price, I would ask, I, I would ask one question that, that seems to be coming up here in the Freedom District and, and I'm not asking for an answer tonight, but I would just ask you to kind of, you know, check your decimal points and, and everything concerning the data because what's being questioned here in this area is, has the county in a, in a desire to enable some developers to have increased density on, on proposed developments? Have we given some of the capacity that was earmarked towards existing homes that are currently on sewer? And they have smaller lots where when and if their septic systems fail, they're going to have to connect to, I don't understand it all, but it's my understanding that they will not have an option, that they're going to have to go onto sewer. And so if they're in that priority sewer area, you know, is there, is the capacity that was earmarked for those homes that are going to need sewer access, has that capacity been given to proposed developments? And so I just ask you to, yeah.
We have gone over this multiple times with that community group and specific people. This was specifically addressed in the Freedom Plan, that very thing. Yes, we did 100%. I've told Joe Grundy that. I've told other members have expressed that concern multiple, multiple times. We absolutely did. We took smaller lots that run well and septic where we, the county have no CIP to extend the lines to those area. However, what we did do was reserve 20 additional percent capacity in the system if and when the time should come that there is failures, because we have not been alerted by the health department or anyone else that there are systemic failures in that system, but we do have a safeguard that if something should happen, we, the county can look to transfer those folks over. And actually, we're looking now for future ahead, what it would cost to actually put the lines in. It's very onerous and we're not taking it lightly because the citizens would have to pay considerable amount of money to hook up. Considerable amount, tens of thousands of dollars to hook up individually, in addition to what the millions of dollars that will cost the county to extend those lines. So this has been addressed. I'm sorry if I'm coming off a little harsh, but we've talked about this multiple times. I think even in planning commission. And I feel like, you know, that this group is beating this drum that really isn't there to beat. And so I just wanted to make it very clear, we have done our due diligence on this.
Yeah, and, 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 and getting an answer like that and, and having, you know, Price as well, you know, echoed that too. I mean, it just, again, that just helps us, us as a commission, you know, answer those questions and say that we've asked, you know, so I appreciate you addressing it, Linda. Thank you.
Right. Any other questions for Price? All right, Price, we can turn you loose tonight. Thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
With that, we'll move on to item eight, Manchester Annexation Number 41, Patapsco 91 OLC. And I think Hannah Weber is standing by to present to us. Hello, Hannah.
Yes, I am. I'm the lucky one now. So as you presented, we are here for a Manchester Annexation. With us today, I believe, is the town administrator of Manchester, Mr. Paracone, as well as Kelly Schaefer, who is representing the property owner and the petitioner of this annexation. They'll be here to answer any of your questions as they come up. Can you guys see my screen, the presentation?
Yes, we can.
Okay, perfect. So just for tonight, we have an informational briefing. I'll be coming back to you all on April 18th for your formal recommendation to the Board of County Commissioners. Getting started, as we said, this is in the town of Manchester. We are like right in the middle of a residential area. If you follow my cursor, this is the annexation area. It's approximately 13 acres with access on Jomer Drive through a private drive. And then also access on Washington Way via, via Briar Way. One thing to note about this annexation is that it is in an existing enclave. So as we all know, enclaves are a big no-no for annexations. And you can see the big corporate limits around and this small donut hole, which includes the annexation area. You can see we are in the southern part of the corporate limits of Manchester. And the enclave includes this 13 acre parcel annexation area as well as four other parcels. Going back to this plat, you can see the annexation number 14 that is surrounding the annexation area was actually enacted in 1977. And then this annexation number 18, which is on Jomer Drive, was actually enacted in 1979. So it was nothing that was obviously done recently and it was probably done before Maryland state law prohibited the enclave rule. So back to this particular annexation, as we said, it's approximately 13.92 acres. It's slightly improved with some buildings, but no one resides on the annexation area. The current zoning of the annexation area is R 40,000 Residential and Conservation in the county. The petitioners have requested the town of Manchester to be placed in the R 10,000 Residential and the public conservation zone as well. The plan is to keep the conservation zone the same when going into the town and just move the R 40,000 portion to the R 10,000 portion. So since the R 10,000 zoning district is 50% more dense than the R 40,000 zoning district in the county, a zoning waiver is required for this annexation and it has been requested by the petitioner and the town. The designated land use is medium density residential. This is taken from the 2018 Manchester Comprehensive Plan. This annexation area is actually in the no-service area for both water and sewer. It's kind of uncommon because it's in the growth area. But as we just heard Price Wagner talking about the triennial update, one of the updates for the town of Manchester is going to be to bring the entire annexation area into the priority service area for both water and sewer to aid in the development of the property when it is annexed. So all that we are recommending is the town of Manchester give public notice by posting the property prior to the date of the public hearing and notifying all of the adjoining property owners. Next steps, as I said, we are going to come back before you all on April 18th for your recommendation to the county commissioners. And then we have time reserved on April 20th and April 27th with the board to further decision on the zoning waiver and comment letter. That does it for me. Jeff, if you want to turn it over to the representatives for the town or Kelly?
Yeah, Mr. Paracone or Kelly, do you have anything you want to add? Kelly, I can see you talking and your microphone appears to be on, but I can't hear you.
Kelly, check your gear wheel in the upper right-hand corner. And sometimes you need to refresh the, um, microphone.
Anything?
Yes, yes, I can hear you now.
Ah, okay. All right. Thank you, Linda. I appreciate that. It's a good insight for future meetings. Um, good evening, everyone. Uh, Kelly Schaefer Miller, I'm here tonight on behalf of the applicants or petitioners in this case, Patapsco Ninety-One LLC. Um, I also have Linda Alexander from CLSI and, um, one of the property owners on the line too, just in case there are any questions. And I know that also Mr. Periconi from Manchester is on to answer any questions specific to the town. Um, I really don't have much to add. I think Hannah did a great presentation, but I am here and available and happy to answer any questions um, that this planning commission has. This has been through, um, uh, the, you know, different municipalities review these annexations differently before they get to the county for review. So this has been through a little bit more of a thorough, um, planning commission, mayor and council review at from the town than other municipalities would have. So there's been lots of discussions. Um, and hopefully I have all the answers if you do have any questions tonight.
So the only question I have, which is the question we typically ask on these things is, has the town taken an official position on this in support of the annexation? Um, or is that still pending or are they against it?
I will let Mr. Periconi chime in if, if his opinion differs, but, um, they, I believe that so far the position has been that they support. This did go through an amendment. It was initially submitted with a request for R ten over the entire portion of the property. And through discussions with the town's planning commission and mayor and council, um, and just some code clarifications on our part, we amended the request to keep the existing conservation zoned portion of the property conservation zones and the remainder R ten zone. Um, and in doing that, we have shown kind of rough concept plans to the town um, that show fourteen lots on the R ten portion here, which has, I, um, it, it's my understanding that any approved annexation will then be subject to kind of a lot maximum at the town through an annexation agreement. So all of that's kind of been talked about and because of all of those discussions and, um, clarification, I, I believe it's fair to say that now the town is supportive.
Thank you. Mr. Periconi? You may have to find your, uh, wheel too. I can't, can't hear you. No, not yet.
How about now?
Yes, yes. Well done. Well done.
My apologies. Um, good evening, Alex Periconi for the town of Manchester at the December twentieth meeting in twenty-two of the Town of Manchester Planning Commission. They did, uh, recommend to the mayor and council to accept this annexation uh, with just basically the same points, um, Ms. Miller has outlined. It was accepted, uh, in January by the, uh, town council and mayor and they have scheduled public hearings for it. I believe we're due at our April eleventh town council meeting for a public hearing and then it'll be voted on for final acceptance from the town.
Excellent. Good to know. Thank you very much. Any, any, any other comments on this? Tonight is, uh, obviously just, um, trying to find it, sort of an introduction, I guess. We're not taking any action tonight. Is there anything else that, uh, uh, anyone would like to add for our information? We, we always appreciate it.
You said this is going to be fourteen lots is the plan for this piece of property?
That's the concept plan that's been prepared by CLSI. They haven't gone to the extent of, you know, preparing a full site plan or anything, but based on a concept drawing, that is, um, that's what we believe would work.
Um, and I may have missed this part and if I did, I apologize. I'm assuming that the town of Manchester is not going to have any, I guess, financial responsibility for extending water and sewer down into these lots?
Well, we will work with the town on, you know, resolving all of that through any of the site plan process. And there will be public works agreements and bonding and all of that. But yes, it's my understanding that, um, you know, the developer will bear the cost of extending public water and sewer.
Oh, right.
Very good. Even any other questions?
Nope, I'm good.
All right. Thank you. Thank you for that. Anyone else? All right. Well, we very much appreciate, um, all of you being here this evening and being available to answer questions. We know everyone's busy and we thank you for making yourselves available, uh, for us and providing information to us. So thank you very much and we'll look forward to seeing this presented at the, uh, at the next meeting.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you. So we will go on now to item nine, the, uh, transportation master plan, something we've heard a little bit about. Claire, we can see you talking, but we can't hear you.
All these gear wheel issues. Sorry, guys. How about now?
Yes, yes.
Yes. Perfect. Okay. Great. Laura, can you do that one more time? Make me presenter. Sorry. Oh, wait, I figured it out. Just kidding.
Yeah, I was gonna say it's, you already.
All right. So, um, everyone can see my screen. Correct. Okay, great. All right. So again, good evening. Mary Lynn and I are with you this evening um, to present, um, or wrap up the planned roadway section. Um, and this is chapter six of the transportation master plan. Um, so I'm going to start with Tony Town and then Mary is going to wrap up with the New Windsor and Union Bridge, um, areas. So just stop me at any point if you have questions. Okay. So Tony Town is located in the northwestern portion of the county. The current roadway system provides commuter access southeast to Westminster, northwest to Emmitsburg, west into Frederick County and north into Pennsylvania. Twenty percent of Tony Town residents commute to Westminster and twelve percent to Frederick and Baltimore Counties. Twenty-five percent of Tony Town workers travel from within the sub-area and twenty-five percent from Pennsylvania. Um, Tony Town's growth rate is anticipated to be low on a regional level, but the highest rate for the county. And traffic congestion in the sub-area is modest. Um, there's, uh, light congestion along Maryland one forty in the PM peak hours at Maryland one ninety-four and Grand Drive, Shepherd Drive. This is staff is recommending thirteen roads, um, in the Tony Town area for adoption into the transportation master plan. Um, there's one state highway project, four planned major streets and eight planned neighborhood connections. Okay. So our one state highway project is Maryland seventy-seven, also known as Middleburg Road. Um, this is from the Frederick County Line, um, to Maryland one ninety-four in Keymar. Um, this section of seventy-seven is located southwest of Tony Town and northwest of Union Bridge. It's one point five miles of two-lane reconstruct. The highway, um, functions as a principal arterial and the project is in state highway administration's highway needs inventory document. Um, and at this time, the project has not been identified as a priority for the county. Um, so we have four planned major streets, as I said, and eight planned neighborhood connections included in the plan. Um, you can see from the map that all of the planned roadways are either within Tony Town's growth area or just outside. Um, and the county and city staff have met several times since twenty twenty-one to discuss the plan um, and have agreed upon the following roads for inclusion. So, um, the first planned major street is Key Road Crossing. Um, it's located in eastern Tony Town. Uh, it's halfway in the city limits and entirely within Tony Town's growth area. It's a half mile of planned road right, roadway from Stumptown Road to Old Tony Town Pike, crossing over Maryland one forty um, just east of the circle. So from Stumptown to Old Tony Town, crossing over one forty. Um, the road is associated with future residential and commercial development. Um, it will add to the overall connectivity of the roadway network, providing alternative routes for local vehicles. Um, its future planned functional classification is undetermined as of now. So our second planned major street, um, Roberts Mill Road Extended is located in the northern area of Tony Town, um, partially in the city limits and entirely within the growth area. It's a point four mile extension of the northern terminus of the existing Roberts Mill Road from Pump House Road to Harney Road. So this is the existing Roberts Mill Road from Pump House Road to Harney Road. The extension will provide access to development when adjacent property and provide an alternative east-west connection uh, between one ninety-four and Harney Road, parallel to, uh, Westview Drive. Westview Drive. And its planned functional classification is a minor collector. Um, the third planned major street is the, um, Tony Town Greenway, also known as the Antrim Boulevard, um, extension. It is located in the south and western area of the city, partially within city limits and entirely within Tony Town's growth area. It is a two and a half mile planned roadway from the terminus of Antrim Boulevard at Trevanion Road to Maryland one forty northwest of the city square. At about the halfway point, the road is planned to cross over Maryland one ninety-four. So starting at, um, the terminus of Antrim Boulevard over one ninety-four um, and to Maryland one forty. So this is the, um, the square of Tony Town right here. Um, the project will redirect truck traffic and through traffic away from downtown and away from the intersection of Maryland one ninety-four and one forty. It will also provide redundancy in the network, improving access and connectivity to a large amount of undeveloped industrial land south and southwest of town. Um, its planned functional classification is undetermined at this time. Um, and the Tony Town bypass is included in the approved FY twenty-four priority letter. Um, not as a top priority, but as a project which the county is committed. Um, the party letter requests M dot, um, investigate the efficacy of reevaluating the potential for the Tony Town bypass for inclusion in the state's highway needs inventory. Are there any questions regarding the, um, bypass or greenway?
I don't think so.
Okay. Right. Moving on, the last planned major street is Worthington Boulevard. Um, it's located in the northern, uh, in northern Tony Town, um, partially in the city limits and entirely within the growth area. It's a one point four mile planned roadway from Franger Road to the future Tony Town Greenway, crossing over Harney Road and one forty. The Franger Road crosses over Harney, one forty, um, and, uh, to the, uh, um, Tony Town Greenway or bypass right here. And Worthington Boulevard is proposed to serve future development in northern Tony Town. It's intended to be part of an overall roadway network, providing alternative routes for local vehicles. Um, and its planned functional classification is a collector road. Right. So Allendale Lane Extended is our first planned neighborhood connection. Um, it's located in southwestern portion of the city, uh, partially incorporated and entirely within the growth area. It's a point six mile extension of the existing Allendale Lane to the proposed Tony Town Greenway. So this is the existing Allendale Lane and then to the Greenway, which, um, connects into the Antrim Boulevard Trevanion intersection. This extension will aid in connecting, um, one ninety-four and one forty and will provide access for development of the industrial property. Um, its planned functional classification is local roadway. And if you recall from chapter five, um, this planned roadway, um, including the short extension, extension to Antrim Boulevard. So the planned roadway, including this section, um, is, uh, one of the most promising potential improvements. Our second planned neighborhood connection is, um, Kraus Mill Road realignment. Um, it's located to the west of the city limits, but within the growth area. It's a three hundred foot realignment of the existing Kraus Mill Road to allow, um, for the suitable intersection with proposed planned neighborhood connection Shower Road. So the highlighted road is Kraus Mill realignment. This dark blue dotted line is Shower Road, which we'll get to in a couple of slides. Um, the realignment includes the termination of Kraus Mill Road at a cul-de-sac away from the one ninety-four in intersection. So, um, a cul-de-sac possibly right in this area. And then the functional classification is a local roadway. So Deal Road relocated, um, is located in, uh, in eastern Tony Town and is not located within, or, um, east of the town, I'm sorry, and is not located within the growth area or priority funding area. It's a point four mile realignment of the existing roadway. Um, uh, the existing road has a sharp bend just south of its intersection with Angel Road. So here's where it intersects with Angel. So it would eliminate this, um, ninety-degree bend. The realignment will create improved geometry at Angel Road, um, and thereby better the traffic flow. With continued development in the northeast portion of Tony Town, this improvement will help the safety and overall roadway network and its planned functional classification is, um, local roadway. Moving on, the fourth planned neighborhood connection is Visa Road relocated. It's located, uh, south of Tony Town, um, and is within the growth area. It's a point three five mile realignment of the existing road, which goes through a series of sharp bends um, to the east of its intersection with Otterdale Mill Road. So the intersection right here with Otterdale Mill would, uh, it would remove these sharp bends. So reconstructing this segment of the road will create improved geometry, um, for both through traffic and local residents. Um, and this road as well has a functional classification of local roadway. Sells Mill Road relocated, um, is located in the southeastern, um, portion of Tony Town, just north of the circle. It's a point two mile realignment of the existing road, eliminating the current Sells Mill Road intersection close to the roundabout and moving it to the west, providing a safer traffic situation. So the road would follow the original alignment right here and would just pop out, um, a little more west of the circle and not so, not so close. The project will provide access for development of property adjacent to the roadway. Um, and its planned functional classification is, uh, local roadway. Great. Next we have Shower Road Connection. Um, again, this is in the area of Kraus Mill Road relocated, which is the one that I showed you a couple of slides back. Um, again, located outside of the city, um, outside of the city, city limits to the west. outside of the city limits to the west, but is within the growth area. This is a .2 mile planned roadway from 194 to the Kraus Mill Road realignment. With the termination and cul-de-sac of Kraus Mill Road, it will provide the needed connection to Maryland 194. And this intersection relocation is to be done in conjunction with the construction of the Tawney Town Greenway. So again, that would be cul-de-sacking Kraus Mill and using Shower Road to reach 194. And at this time, the planned functional classification is undetermined. So planned neighborhood connection number seven is Starboard Drive Extended. It's located in southern Tawney Town. It's a 1/10th of a mile extension of the existing Starboard Drive to Trevanion Road. So the existing drive and then Trevanion Road. The extension will provide new residential access to Trevanion Road. It also will provide a second access location for the local neighborhood, which currently only has access off of Windy Hillous Drive. And I apologize, they cut that off, but this is Windy Hillous Drive right here in the roadway. Just loops around the starboard. And its planned functional classification is local roadway. And then our last planned neighborhood connection is Stump Town Road Relocated. It's located in the eastern area of Tawney Town. It is a quarter, a 1/4 mile realignment of the existing road to eliminate a 90-degree bend. Reconstructing this segment of Stump Town will improve geometry and provide better traffic flow in the area proposed for future residential development. And its planned functional classification is local roadway. So those are the four planned major streets and eight planned neighborhood connections. I'm going to move on to the three roads that staff is recommending for removal in the Tawney Town area. All of these roads are within the Tawney Town city limits. So the first is Commercial Access Road. It's a planned neighborhood connection located in southeast Tawney Town, just south of the circle. It's a .2 mile connection and linked to development of the commercial property south of the circle. The planned roadway is being removed by request of city staff because the property was developed with internal circulation and connectivity that replaces the need for the road. The second road recommended for removal is Crimson Avenue Extended. It's a planned neighborhood connection located in northeast Tawney Town. It is .5 miles from existing Crimson Avenue to Angel Road. So this is the existing Crimson Avenue and then Angel Road right here, 194. The roadway was constructed as part of the Meads Crossing subdivision and now serves the city as a local roadway. So that one has been completed. And then the third roadway recommended for removal is Genevieve Drive Extended. It's a planned neighborhood connection in southeast Tawney Town. It's less than 1/10th of a mile in length and connects existing Genevieve Drive to Antrim Boulevard. So it made this connection right here. It was constructed in conjunction with the commercial properties to aid in connectivity to these commercial properties. And that's it. Does anyone have questions before we move on to Mary with Union Bridge and New Windsor?
Doesn't look like anyone has any questions for you, Claire.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, nice presentation.
Yeah, Mary, I'll turn it over to you.
First of all, can you hear me?
We can hear you, yes.
Okay, good. And can you see the presentation?
We can.
Perfect, okay. As Claire said, this is the last of the planned major roadways, Chapter 6, that we've been going over for the last few months. And this is New Windsor and Union Bridge. As you can see, and as you already know, I'm sure, this is in the northwestern part of the county, as you see in the circled area. Staff is recommending four Maryland State Highway projects, all in the HNI, the Highway Needs Inventory, as well as four planned major streets. And as with all of these, we have talked to the municipal staffs about these. And particularly in the case of Union Bridge, there were some comments that we'll integrate into the plan, although we won't really, it won't really affect including the roads in, but we will be making some comments because they did have some concerns. So the four state roads are Maryland 97 from 194 to 75, Maryland 84 from 75 to Baus Church Road, Maryland 31 from the Frederick County line to the town of New Windsor. And then the last is not a capacity-enhancing project, it's the Maryland 31, New Windsor Streetscape. And I think we've talked before, we included when we talked about the Eldersburg area, the Sykesville Streetscape project. And these will be the last two state Streetscape projects in the county that have been going on for at least 20 years. So the first, Maryland 97, from 194 to 75, this is where Claire left off when she discussed Maryland 97 with the Tawney Town presentation. This is a complete reconstruct, where's the cursor? Okay, there's a little bit here that exists, that's Middleburg Road, but this would all here be mostly new roadway, well, would all be new roadway. And in speaking with the planner for the town of Union Bridge, there's pretty big concerns that this is no longer feasible because of some ag pres, as well as other constraints on it. It is still in the state's Highway Needs Inventory, and within the next few years, they may be reassessing it. But we're recommending that because it is still in the state's plan, we at least leave it in this long-range plan. At the very least, they would like to see the end of it here, all the way. I guess that would be Butcher John. That would help with keeping traffic off of Main Street. So although this entire improvement may not be made, there may be a smaller improvement, still recommended closer to the town. The second improvement is Maryland 84 from 75 to Baus Church Road. Let's see, that is 3.74 miles. It is a rural collector, and this would just be a two-lane upgrade to this. No work has been performed on this project other than to identify the future need. And again, as with a lot of things in this area of the county, this may be a problem because it may impact some ag pres properties. But you can see that it's, it goes through the historic town of Union Town, north to there. The next project is Maryland 31 from the Frederick County line to New Windsor. This is 2.92 miles. It's a rural minor arterial, a two-lane reconstruct. And again, there are possibly ag preservation easements located along the alignment here. And I did look in Frederick County, since some of these are impacted by Frederick County, to see if these were in their long-range plans or even a priority of theirs, and they are not at this point. So I thought that was of some interest. I think these will have to be reassessed when the HNI is reassessed. And then the last state project is Maryland 31, the Main Street Streetscape. This has quite a history, it's about half a mile. It's to enhance the community through improvements to sidewalks, streetscape, pedestrian crossings, and system preservation. This has been a high priority for construction in the county's priority letter. There's a bit of a history of, an effort was made to coordinate with the relocation of some water lines, that's taken years. That looks like it's back on track. But again, the commissioners just this last week agreed to continue putting it as a high priority in their priority letter. So then there's four planned major streets as well. The first three are in Union Bridge, the Connector Road, George Street Extended, Mount Pleasant Boulevard, and then the fourth one is in the town of New Windsor. And basically, the three Union Bridge projects are all serving the same purpose. They're alternatives to going through the town, they're increasing the connectivity, and they're important because they could keep truck traffic off the town, out of downtown. So the first one is the Connector Road. This will only be necessary, you can see this connects Union Bridge to the future Maryland 77, which doesn't exist yet. This obviously would only be necessary if Maryland 77 is constructed, and that's the one we just talked about. But here's Main Street, and again, the whole purpose of all of these is really to keep traffic off of Main Street. The next one is called George Street Extended, but it may need to be renamed. As you can see, it comes off George Street, avoids the downtown area, and connects here. This is currently industrially zoned and developed as a solar development. So at the point at which that is decommissioned and something else is developed there, it's still a possibility, but unlikely because of other things that have gone in around here. We've been informed by the town. So it's really possible that the connection might come up, come off of Wyatt Road and be a smaller connection. But still, they would like to keep a connection in here, and they plan on doing that when they do update their plan. So we may rename this from George Street because it may not come out of George Street. There's nothing, okay, that's pretty much what you need to know about that. The third one in Union Bridge is another connection here. It is from Bark Hill to Maryland 75. It is part of the overall roadway network for alternative routes. And this would eventually be constructed by the developer of that property, if that ever takes place. So the last planned major street is in New Windsor, and it is the relocation of Springdale Avenue from, I'm sorry, it's the realignment of Springdale Avenue with New Windsor Road. And basically, it will get rid of this dangerous intersection here and allow this to happen. There was at one time a cul-de-sac that was proposed, that has been taken off the plan. But basically, this is in there to provide improved geometry and better traffic flow at the primary gateway on the east side of town. And this is considered basically a safety improvement. There are no planned neighborhood connections, and there's nothing being taken off the plan in this area. Do you have any questions about this?
Doesn't look like we do, Mary.
Okay, then that completes, for now, Claire and my assessment of the planned major streets throughout the county. As I said last time, we'll be coming back to you with an assessment of the prioritization of the importance of all of them, and we'll be going over that early in May with you.
Well, thank you very much, it's been a big project.
It's still going on, yeah.
Well, thank you very much. Have a great evening.
You too.
So we'll move on to Item 10, which is Planned Commercial Center Text Amendment and Introduction. And I believe, Madam Secretary, you're walking us through this.
Yes, I am, so. Let me share my presentation with you all. Can you see my screen?
Yes.
Okay. So this came about because of the Stablos property planned commercial center development back in like the late summer of 2022. Do you all recall that particular development case that we had? And at that time, the Planning and Zoning Commission chose to deny that particular case because of the clause that said "may approve." And then the property owner appealed to the Board of Zoning Appeals. And this case was then overturned by the Board of Zoning Appeals. At that time, the community surrounding that filed an appeal then to the Maryland Circuit Court, and that was an administrative hearing. And my understanding, and Jim Aman's online, he can better elaborate on this. My understanding at that time was that this was an administrative hearing, and all of the essentially documents that were presented were not into the Circuit Court in time, and so they dropped the case. So as of now, this property owner has the right to develop a planned commercial center with the second-story residential component. And so what we're here to discuss with you this evening as a result of that is many members of the community backing up to this particular property had concerns regarding the residential component of these planned commercial centers. And I think a lot of the anxiety comes from the similar property that's developed closer to the intersection of 26 and 32, referred to as the Princess Shopping Center. And so there's a lot of concerns with that particular look and style of residential development on top of the commercial. So with that, I'm going to go ahead and change my slide here. On October 6, because of letters written in by the community at large, were concerned regarding the second-story residential option, that the Board of County Commissioners had a meeting at their regularly scheduled open session and decided to refer this particular section, so Section 155.092, planned commercial centers. They decided to forward the residential portion to this body, the Planning Commission, for your review and consideration and commenting on if there should be any further text amendments done to this particular district. I'm not going to go through all of this. This is the code specifically for 155.092. And just to be clear, so 155.092 planned commercial centers, the residential is a part of that overall development style. The planned commercial centers really are our typical strip center that you see in the county. So when you have, you know, two or three different types of commercial uses in a typical strip center, that is also a planned commercial center. It's the residential component. And that's found here in Section D of the current code. So I'm going to flip to the next slide, which shows that a little larger. So currently, our code allows for, and this is subdivision, not zoning, allows for accessory uses regardless of the underlying zoning district. And these are allowed in all C1, C2, and C3, that the Planning and Zoning Commission may allow. And this is the issue that we had during that meeting, was that we may allow, doesn't say shall, it says may. That second-story structure is not more than a total of two stories, and that residential units may be provided on that second story of the structure. And no residential uses are permitted on the first story of the structure within any planned commercial center. And then they give some floor area limits, that the floor area of a residential unit should be not smaller than 600 square feet, but no greater than 1,000 square feet in size. And the area of all residential units shall not exceed 50% of the total area of the structure. So basically, it has to fit the footprint of the first floor exactly to the second floor. And it has to, for the residential component, has to meet all concurrency management standards, so schools, roads, and things like that, water, sewer, any issues with that. Residential development impacts these. And then, this has been on the books for decades. We only have one developed. But then there's a redevelopment clause in here that a planned commercial center existing after 2007 may be redeveloped to include residential units on the second story of any existing structure. And I think Mary found through her research, this really dates back to 2004, but I believe the first one might have been built around '07. And then, an amended site plan is approved by Planning Commission if you want to redevelop, and then in compliance with the subdivision chapters. So that is what is before you this evening. What will we be doing is, not at the April meeting, but sometime in May, we'll be coming back to you with some additional information, some suggestions, and perhaps edits to the code as it stands, if that's the direction that you all want to take with regards to the second-story residences. So I'm going to go ahead and stop sharing my screen. So I'm gonna go ahead and stop sharing my screen. Okay. Oh no, did I get booted? Okay, there we go. All right, got booted for a second. Um, so, and I know we have some callers on the line that signed up for this evening to discuss this with you. I would say this, at this point in time, this legislation would not affect the current development of the Stablos property. Would not have been given any direction to affect what's already in process. But this would be more looking toward the future. If you all want to remove that second story residential provision. So I'll let you all discuss for a minute, and if you have any direction that you'd like to give us, we weren't really given any direction per se, other than let's investigate and research this um with you all.
Do we, do we know why, I may have asked this when we were looking at this project before. What the genesis is for having residential on the second story of a planned commercial center?
Um.
Which help us understand where that came from.
I, I can't say why Carroll County did it, and we don't have any notes or any information on why Carroll County specifically chose to take this. I would say this, though, um, in the uh, early to mid two thousands, that was a favorable development technique of the traditional neighborhood development, kind of going back to, you know, like a typical Main Street community or where shopkeepers would have their residences above with maybe their shop below. This was Carroll County's take on that. Um, and also to try to address within the same development footprint. Residential with commercial, because we don't have a lot of zone land for rental units and more affordable housing. We just don't in Carroll County. And this is an attempt to try to do something without expanding the development envelope to keep it within a similar footprint. Um, so that's, you know, kind of the, the. What maybe, that's the advocating for the way forward is that, you know, we do have a critical need. There's a national housing shortage. Carroll County is not spared from that. And we have residents and citizens that need housing to, to live in that they can afford. Um, and so this is one way to do that potentially. And we're not setting the market price on this. But one would think it would be more affordable, um, being co-located with commercial.
Okay, that's helpful. Matt, you have a question?
Well, I'll just say, I, you know, I was adamantly against this project, not because of what it was, because of where, where it was more. Than anything, and the fact that they actually took landscaping out of it between the initial and what happened at the end. But I, I mean, I've been to Urbana. Urbana's got two and three story ones like that that look great. I mean, I just think, you know, location and, you know. I remember asking the question, was this an up or down thing when that came in front of us? And we were told it was up or down and not go back and change some stuff to make it see, fit in a little bit better in the neighborhood. Um, you know, that was, that was my take. I, I don't, I'm not like totally against them. I just think. You know, the way it's wrote, we should have discretion if it fits in that area. And it definitely, in my opinion, did not fit in that area. So I was, I was not very happy it got turned over, but.
Well, and, and it seems to me, you know, Matt, one of the things that, you know, where it's done well. There's, there is, Linda, you're hitting it on the head and we're talking all around it, but there's an architectural element to it. There's a street scape feel to it, to where, you know, it doesn't come across as um so motel-less and motel-ish. And I don't know how to, to, to say it any other way. And then, you know, one of the complaints we're getting from the current one that, that is developed at the Princess Center is that. You know, people are drying their laundry on, on the balcony. And it's just not, that, that's not indicative of the community that we want to have. And so is there a way for us to create some architectural design elements? On this type of development so that it does look more, more residential? Um, you know, it, the, the way that was developed, you know, it, it actually harkens more towards. You know, retail on the, on the first floor and maybe office on the second floor. It doesn't really look very residential, you know? There's not really an apartment feel to it. So that's some of the, the comments that I'm getting. Uh, or, or the comments I would give staff too, is that if we could put some architectural guidelines around this. It, it might be helpful for both the community. Um, and, and it might attract the quality of the development that, that the community is seeking. Because what was done is not reflective of what's up in Urbana. I mean, I know, I think I know some of the developments, Matt, that you're talking about. And those, mixed use when it's done well is really cool. You know, Linda, I think, I think y'all are right as a staff to, to, to say, you know, this is one way to do this. But I think if we don't do it correctly, it, it's not, it, it's not a good thing for the community at all.
Yeah. Janice, did you have some comments?
Yeah, I, I do think that we need to have some kind of architectural requirements. But as far as laundry, you know, that would be in the. Development of the property. I mean, that, that's whoever the owner is of that complex to put up some kind of restrictions. And I don't know that we could mandate that. I think that's more for the developer to do when he's building up. But the architectural requirements would be great. And I'm sure we will probably discuss this further at another time. Um, unfortunately, the project that came before us is able to move forward as it is. Am I correct, Linda?
Um, I mean, so far, um, there's been no stay or anything for this particular property. The, the project's been overturned. So I mean, as of now, it's still moving forward. Um, and, and I think this is a really great discussion to, for us to give us guidance, to look at architectural standards more in depth with this. You know, I'll go back to what had happened in the fall was really unfortunate. That project had been heard the year before and during concept. That was really the time to say, we don't, we didn't want the second story residential. I think that was really the burden at that time. And then we had a complete changeover and Planning Commission between when it was first heard and second time it came through. Um, and then that was a very big challenge then at that point to go back and say. What changes do you want made? Because we're already in final. So I think, you know, lesson for all of us that those are things that could have been addressed during concept for all of us moving forward. But again, it did get overturned, so it ended up being a moot point anyway with regard to, to that. And maybe it would have been more palatable with better design standards, and I think that's a great thing. I mean, honestly, it's been on the books for almost twenty years. We've only had one. Um, property, really, you wouldn't take advantage of it. No one's even redeveloped that way yet. But that's not to say they wouldn't do it in the future, and I think it would look much better. And I agree with you, Pete, that we would want to see something maybe a little more um. Little nicer looking, I guess, so to speak. And I do agree with you, kind of that motel feels maybe not what we're going for. Maybe more of a true residential. I've seen some more things in the Kettelins in Montgomery County and stuff like that. So I'm even in the Owens Mills area, they have the first floor commercial, but then the residential kind of more condo-y.
Yeah, you're exactly right, Linda. And, and, and again, I, I, I apologize. Cause you know, when you, when you say there's a problem with something, you ought to have a solution. I really don't have a solution for this. And I, and when you say architectural standards, I wouldn't know where to start. I really don't. Um, other than you know it when you see it, and, and that's not it. And so I, I apologize because I really don't have much, you know. One, one of the things that, that I kind of think of when, when Jenna said what she did about the laundry. I don't necessarily, I agree with her, it'd be hard to enforce, you know, that, that, hey, you went swimming, you know, you, you went to somebody's pool and you, you, you put your, your towel out to dry. I mean, you know, that, that, you know, makes some sense. But, you know, if we required laundry hookups in each unit, I don't know, is that something that we want to do? I mean, I, I don't know. I really don't know what the solutions are. Um, and the other thing I, I would ask is, is, is. When, when we say that anything we do here would not apply to this development. Is that because it's, it's written in the code? Or, or is that our customary, because they've gone through the process, they, they did everything they were supposed to do? It's our fault as a county that we didn't, you know, do things differently? I mean, or is it the case that we could say, listen, you know, if you haven't issued a permit and you haven't put a shovel in the ground. You gotta go back and, and design it this way. Is, is, what, what is this? What is the statute there that we're, we're leaning on where we can't get this guy to, to step up and do something better?
Well, I'll, I'll defer to Jim, but Maryland is typically what they call a high vesting state. So really, what the standard typically for Maryland has been in the past is shovel in the ground kind of thing. Or for, for even footers in the ground, so to speak. However, I've seen some recent court cases where vesting has been just investment to a substantial amount. So if it's demonstrated that, you know, they have, you know, they've gone through the entitlement process. And, and other than pulling the permits, um, and they've spent tens of hundreds of thousands of dollars on things. And they have, you know, contractors lined up. You know, depending on what the next step in the process would be, a court could say, you know what, we do see that. I mean, there's no hard and fast rule for vesting. Um, Jim, I, I think you'd be better, better than me to elaborate.
Uh, right, yes, Mr. Lester. So traditionally, Maryland courts have um. Found that a project is vested, and that basically means it can move forward no matter what changes are made to the code subsequently. And um, the courts have found vesting traditionally. Um, when the um, project has obtained a development right and a permit. So basically approval and the permits and um, has basically put shovels on the ground and moved dirt. Um, if that happens, then um, the project is vested and any subsequent changes wouldn't affect that specific project. Um, so it really, uh, I guess just depends on the project and where it is in the actual construction of it.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Matt, did you have a comment?
Yeah, I was just gonna say that, you know, I, I think, I think we need to have some different language. That gives the, gives us the right to um. You know, I think it's a good thing to have this in the code, but I don't know if, if we're as. Us as a planning and zoning aren't gonna really have any teeth in it. I mean, I really think, you know, cause like in Frederick there in Urbana, you know, that's where like the main entrance is coming into a development. And it's got townhomes all around it. It fits. It doesn't fit right beside a state highway that's got a thirty foot back behind it and got, you know, R forty thousand or, actually those lights are bigger than that back behind it. And it doesn't even have, you know, my, my biggest take was is, you know, the state roads didn't even want to put a crosswalk in for people to walk across Route twenty six. It's very congested right there already. And the fact that he took landscaping out of the project, even though he put in the sidewalk out front that didn't connect anything. He took landscaping out when it came to final, which, you know, I, I could hear the people complaining that, you know, it's like. But, you know, I, I think it's something that fits good, but I think it needs to fit in the right area, and I don't think that was the right area. That was my take, and I don't know if we can craft a language to make it associated with more of a development. I don't know.
Hi, Stephen, go ahead. You're.
Yeah, I, I mean, I, I agree. I mean, to me, this area is. It, it just, it, to me, it just doesn't make any sense of what you're, they're trying to put where they are. I mean, especially with literally across the street, you already have commercial development that has a lot of vacancies in it. To, to be honest, so it just seems to me like you're kind of doing the same thing. You're just building another building that. Yes, architecture does not fit, that obviously, uh, as we've seen from emails, the residents and people in the area are not very welcoming to. So, yeah, I mean, I, I agree that it would be nice if we had a little bit more ability to, you know, make some changes, you know, stuff with the architecture and all. Cause it's just, to me, it just doesn't make any sense why you're putting this there, I, I guess.
You know, and my frustration was, um, it seemed like our role was academic and, and actually fairly useless. Um, because we offered a number of comments. I think we articulated pretty clearly all the things we're talking about tonight. We even stepped back and said, it's not even just the architecture. But Matt, to your point, you know, I thought we couldn't have been clearer that we didn't think it fit with the surrounding community. It wasn't even consistent with the master plan, all things that are, you know, dead on things we're supposed to consider. And it still makes no difference. And so what's the point, really? Um, when, as I've said to Jim before, my frustration is that it just gets appealed de novo. And then that's it. And the reasons we gave and the community comments that we heard and incorporated really are, are um, given no weight. Um, when it goes up. And so I think it is a flawed process. We can change the statute, but the process is always going to be a problem. Um, I think. And when it came to us in concept, I was critical of the residences on above. And I made it clear that it was a problem for me, and it was gonna be a problem when they came back. And so I encouraged them to design it differently, which they didn't. And then they just moved it on through. They just shoved it on through. And there was really nothing this commission could do about it. And so I think no matter how you change the code to, to accomplish these things, which I would be in favor of. I don't know that the process makes it any more meaningful. I think we'll say we don't like it and we don't approve it and it ought to be different. And then it'll go on up and depending on how the hearing goes, de novo, new day, nothing we said matters. If they can convince the, you know, the BZA, and this is not a criticism of the BZA at all. It's just the process I, I'm very critical of. So it's like, why do we even bother? Now, maybe the lesson learned is that we can be, maybe I should have been more aggressive at the, at the concept stage. But say the commission had said, we don't like it, we don't want residents on it, we don't approve the concept plan. And they come back at the next stage full of residences. What do we do about it? We can say, we don't like it again. We still don't like it. We didn't like it last time. We don't like it this time. Too bad. We deny it. They appeal it. It goes in. So I don't know what the bigger solution is, because I think we did a very good job in articulating. And well, first of all, listening to the community and then looking at the bigger picture. This thing doesn't fit where it's going. It just doesn't. And you can, you can dress it up and you can decorate it and you can make, you can put pretty lights on it. It's still in the wrong place for the wrong use. Um, right now, and it isn't safe for the reasons that we said. That's a busy highway and there's not even gonna be a, a crosswalk or a walk indicator. And I worry that somebody's gonna get hurt or killed there, and yet it's going in. So um, I have. I don't know. I'm, I'm frustrated by all of this. And Michael, I didn't give you a chance to speak. I'm sorry about that. So, Michael, did you, did you have a comment? I know Pete, you have a comment too, so.
I was, I was, Jeff, I was just gonna, you know, pretty much say what you were saying. It's frustrating that, you know, this was one of my first uh. Cases, I guess, uh, when I joined the board. And I specifically remember you, it wasn't confrontational, but, you know, bringing those guys, uh, holding them, their feet to the fire and saying, hey, we asked you to do this when you were here and nothing's been done. And then they go and change, take the landscaping out at the final, you know, kind of, it, it's like, okay, why do we have the code? And then the BZA to overturn it. Uh, despite what the code says, the may, when we, that may word gives us the power to say, no, we, this has to change. We don't like this, blah, 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 uh, with no regard to that. And it's, it's just, it's frustrating. And I sense your frustration. And you're right. It's like, why, what, something else, there's a disconnect somewhere in that appeal. Uh, between us and the BZA and the BZA, did they review our meeting notes? Did they review our, the recording of those meetings? Did they review your statements about when it first came through? I doubt it. Doesn't seem like it. Did they ask for any up for further input? No. That's the disconnect. So what, what's the purpose of having the code? What's the purpose of having, um, you know, these, these processes in place? So that we can offer feedback to the developer and say, you know, we don't, this isn't gonna work here. You need to do this, this, and this. And then for them to ignore it and go appeal it and win, there's, that's the disconnect, I think. Uh, between the BZA and, and the Planning and Zoning Commission.
I, I guess, I guess what I wanted to say is, yeah. I, I value and respect. I value and respect the fact that the developer has rights to the extent that, you know, an appeal is exactly that. He's appealing to someone else, you know, can you not take another look at this? And so to give them the right of appeal is a great thing. Having said that, Jim, I'm wondering if we had language, and I don't mean to put you on the spot. So this doesn't require you to respond. But if the language, like, I think Michael's kind of headed there, the word may, I mean, if there were stronger language that in certain circumstances, you know, that are exceptional, or I don't know what it would be. But, you know, does the word may open us up to where we're being arbitrary and capricious, you know? Or can you set a standard that, that says, look, in certain circumstances, this could be done, but it's going to be rare. I, you know, how do you do that? How do you write that? And so, you know, good luck with that, Jim.
You write it very carefully, is how you write it. Because as you said, Mr. Lester, there are issues with arbitrary and precious and also due process issues and constitutional issues with equal protection. You know, we're just supposed to treat everyone the same way. And that goes to developers even. Just because they make a lot of money doesn't mean they lose legal protection. So there would be concerns, there's always concerns when the government has discretion and they use that discretion to make differences between person A and person B based on a sort of arbitrary and capricious matter, as you were saying before. So we can certainly explore language to do that, but we would have to do it very carefully.
And then that is where I fall back to, and again, I'll be quiet because I know there are people that want to talk that are citizens. And that's where, when it gets approved, you're going to, from a landscaping standpoint, from a lighting standpoint, from a safety and security standpoint, from a traffic's pattern standpoint, and from an architectural, just, you know, being welcoming as a residence. It needs to be upgraded in certain ways. How we do that, I don't know. And I really don't, I wish I knew.
My question, yeah, my question would be, could we make it where the wording would be as it would be part of a community? Because the ones that I've seen that look good are attached to a community. I mean, because, you know, if you build a nice, I mean, you know, as you said, we need much more, we need more housing in Carroll County, everywhere. And if it was attached to a community, like some of the ones that I've seen, I mean, I think they look good, even, you know, as long as you have the architect right on the front of it as you're entering a development or, you know, kind of a strip mall attached to a development, they look good, so.
That's certainly language we can explore.
The question I come back to though, even if we do that, I mean, in some ways we did that. I mean, here, it, it has to be, I mean, part of what we're required to look at is, is whatever the project is consistent with the master plan? Is it consistent with the surrounding community? And we're asked to exercise discretion around that. We take in input from the community. Lots of people came in and talked to us, lots of people sent us letters. We take all of that into account. We exercise discretion, we hold up that standard. So we can, you know, would this be better as part of a community? How does this fit with the surrounding community? All of those things, which we did. We articulated pretty clearly, I think, between all of us as a commission in holding those standards up, why we thought this one was inconsistent and therefore shouldn't be approved. And I know I beat a dead horse here, but the problem, I think, with the process is when it does get appealed, and I certainly understand, if I'm the property owner, I want the right to appeal and I don't have a problem with that. I have a problem with the fact that the process then takes it to an appeal where none of the community input is considered by the BZA. None of the letters, none of the, none of the comments, none of the conversation, the community conversation that happened, unless they're all going to, you know, sort of descend en masse on the BZA to do it all again, as opposed to the BZA being required to consider the record from below. So community citizens aren't inconvenienced a second time to try to clear their schedules, to go say the same thing they already said before when there's a record of it in the first place. So I think the process is inconsiderate to the community. I think it's disrespectful to this commission. I think it's, I just think it's not the best we can do as a community. I think it's deficient in a lot of ways and it's so easily fixable. All of that work by the community, by this commission, could be captured if the appeal just had to be on the record so that they did have to take consideration of that. Janice, you have your, have your hand up.
I do. So I do think one place we fell short, we heard the concept plan and I could have sworn we said we wanted to see it back, but that was quite some time back. And not everybody was a part of the commission then. But it came back to us in a final plan. So then we were trying to backtrack and tell them what to do. And frustration came over and then motions were made. We said, no. So I think we need to be more cognizant upfront and make sure that if it is a concept plan and it appears questionable, that we stipulate that we need to see the preliminary before it comes back before final.
So, yeah, and that's a great question because, Janice, or pardon me, Linda, from a process standpoint, if this, something like this were to happen in the future, you know, where we, we've seen something and we said a few things and it comes back and they didn't do anything. Well, our action this time, we, you know, we denied it. Could the alternative have been, you were not ready to approve this yet. We're not going to deny it, but we're also not going to approve it. You need to go back. Could, could we have done that again to this guy?
I don't think we could do that. And Jim, please correct me if I'm wrong, but I think you could have approved it with additional conditions that you wanted to see as far as the landscaping and stuff goes. If you thought that was subpar, so like in your latitude range, you can change signs. You can, you know, change parking, traffic patterns, where things are situated on a property. You can ask for more landscaping and you could have held them to that too. I think those are some things that definitely can be done. I'm not sure if the, you know, ideally, they're supposed to take your concerns at concept and bring them back. And it should, your concern should be what they go from concept to preliminary to final. I mean, that really should have been done.
So my, so Linda, I hear you on that. If I'm a developer and I don't want to do what we're suggesting, I bring it at concept, commission says, you got to change all these things. I leave, I come back, I didn't change any of them. I'm now at final, I didn't like any of the commission's ideas or requirements or conditions. So I say, here we are at final, I know you had all these conditions, I know you wanted all this extra landscaping. I'm not doing it, I'm just not doing it. We deny it. It's really sort of what happened here, including at final, they even took away some of the landscaping. So, so we get somebody who's just defiant. You know, they come in at concept, we couldn't be clearer. Yeah, we could have been clearer, I get that. Suppose we were, I'm not sure it would have been different. I'm pretty sure they would have come back and said, yeah, we heard you with our ears, but we're not doing any of the things that you want now I'm at final. Now, what can we do as a commission at final? Yes, we can ask for a special report, maybe. After, after they come in at concept, we want a special report. They come back at the special report, they're still defiant. So we want one another special report, maybe we want five special reports. You know, at some point, we get to the endpoint and they've either done what we want or they haven't. And if they just haven't, what can we do? Other than keep adding conditions or, you know, say we want a 40-foot berm around the whole place or, you know, things like that. Ultimately, at some point, it gets across the finish line and then it goes up on, on the de novo appeal. And so it's really, you know, we have the defiant, you know, a defiant, I guess, petitioner at concept. What do we do as a commission? And that's not an answer for tonight. It's just a, you know, we're working hard to do the things the code says we're supposed to do. And we're listening to the community and we're balancing out and we're exercising our discretion consistent with the master plan and the surrounding community and all of those things. Sometimes the community agrees with us, sometimes they disagree. But we always have taken it seriously. We've always taken all that information and we always consider those things. To what end, I guess? So, Jim, you have a, you have a green light on?
Yes, I just wanted to follow up on, and I understand all of your frustration with the appeal process. And I just want to emphasize that is a function of state case law and not the county code.
No, I know that because I raised the issue with you. I said, I use the word is it hardwired, you know, in the code? And your answer, your legal advice is rightly that it is. That doesn't mean I have to like it and it doesn't mean I think it's right or fair.
Absolutely.
Because I think it's, I think that's a, I think it's a significant flaw. And changing that would, would fix a lot of the things that we're talking about tonight. Still gives appeal rights. I just think it would be a more meaningful appeal to everybody involved if it were on the record. Because we're doing our work, but the record is of no value, is the problem. So, anyway, well, I appreciate everybody's, one, listening to me vent, which is a worthless thing that's being done. But maybe there'll be a way at some point in the future where that could, that could change for the better. Stephen, did you have a question or comment?
Yeah, no, no, I was just kind of commenting on you use the word defiant. And I do remember when the developer came in, he definitely was very, I guess standoffish was probably the best way to describe his demeanor with not only us, but with the members of the public that actually came out in masks, you know, as the largest, the largest amount of citizens come out against anything really, you know, to one of our in-person meetings. So, I mean, that's just a really good way to describe it because there definitely was defiance or standoffishness, I guess you could say, from the word go.
Yeah, I think so. And look, that's their prerogative and they can do that. And, you know, that's all right. I just would like the community's input and our exercise of discretion to be more meaningful, I guess, and be part of the consideration as it moves through the process. I think the BZA, if I were on the BZA, I would appreciate having that record as opposed to having to develop it all from scratch every time. If we're doing our job, their job should be better. They, we should elevate the decision-making process because we're elevating the conversation because we're bringing more to the table. And instead, they've got to do all the lifting all the time. And it's one person. It's just, it's a, it's a bad setup for everybody above. So, anyway, I'll get off my high horse. And I guess, Linda, is there anything else on this before we open up to general public comment?
No, that's all. We do have a speaker, Bill McCormick, who actually also sent in a comment letter and a petition to the Planning and Zoning Commission earlier this week. So he just wants to comment on the topic. So I'm going to turn that over to he and Laura to unmute. Yep, there you go, Bill McCormick.
Can you all hear me?
Yes, yes.
Okay, great. I first want to say that I really appreciate you taking time to listen to the citizens. I know you do, I know, I know you take it seriously. So I definitely appreciate that. You know, just, I know it didn't come across this way when whoever said it, said it, but I think the phrase was an unfortunate lesson learned from the county perspective. And, you know, from our perspective, it's a little bit more than that. You know, developers invest money, you know, somebody said tens or hundreds of thousands of dollars. But there are dozens of citizens who have invested tens or hundreds of thousands of dollars making Carroll County their home. And I believe they have rights too. I believe mixed use should be its own zone. I can't remember who said it, but somebody said this particular topic shouldn't be addressed at this time because it would affect every commercial property in the county. I think that's kind of the point. Nobody should really be able to just slap apartments in any commercial zone in the county. If mixed use was its own zone, it would allow for more transparency within the community. It would allow the Planning and Zoning Commission more oversight into ensuring mixed-use zones fit with the surrounding community. At a minimum though, I think the code for planned commercial centers needs to be overhauled with regards to accessory use. The current code is sloppy. Seems like apartments are just kind of slapped on as an afterthought just to kind of quote unquote, keep up with what is thought to be the current trend in community development. But based on input from at least one source, our previous state delegate, Susan Krebs, what was submitted to the Planning and Zoning Commission illustrating what mixed use could look like is in no way, in no way, in no way resembles past projects or currently planned projects. Given this estimate that the process was flawed, misguided and definitely misrepresented. The current code allows for discretion. However, not all parties that rule on these cases understand that or care to use that discretion. Given this misalignment, standards should be developed in order to maintain a higher standard for our community as a whole. The argument against standards, for whatever reason, is that of property rights. However, property rights do not come with car plans to undertake any endeavor on property that you own. I can't open a bar in my basement, I can't open a firing range on a half acre of land. I can't open a dispensary within certain distance from schools. There should be standards. Ms. Eisenberg mentioned the petition that I submitted. I submitted that petition of people who agree with removing second-story apartments from planned commercial center code. I'd also ask that you take into consideration those who have been critical of these types of projects very recently by writing in to you guys. Somebody mentioned that the projects which are currently underway, it's kind of tough to like stop that and that, that's kind of confusing, which is, you know, kind of the reason we were here. I would ask that if you do agree that this particular use should be more thoughtfully executed, that you make your motion when you, if you decide to, that the code take effect the day it is passed for all projects that have not been issued a building permit and broken ground. County code should not be written in stone. I would ask that you consider removing second-story apartments from planned commercial centers until something that the community can be proud of can be thoughtfully introduced. And again, I thank you for listening to me.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else that is on the line to offer public comment?
No, I believe he was the only person that signed up for this evening.
Okay, very good. Then we've reached the end of our agenda. We're on item 12, which is adjournment. So is there a motion that we adjourn?
I move we adjourn.
All right, motion, second, all in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
All right, that looks unanimous. Thank you all very, very much. Great to see you this evening and we'll see you.
Good commentary, thank you guys.
Thank you all.
Good night.